The time is now five oh eight. Good evening and welcome to the February first, two thousand and twenty four fiscal year two thousand and twenty five superintendent's proposed operating budget work session of the Prince George's County Board of Education. My name is Judy McInnes Murray, Board Chair. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid any technical interference with the microphones and taping of the meeting. This meeting is currently being livestreamed via YouTube. We also have Spanish interpretation services available for all for this evening. Mrs. Lopez, please announce the Spanish interpretation is available by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen.
La interpretación en español está disponible para los espectadores haciendo clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la pantalla. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione español.
Thank you. For viewers who are not able to observe at this time, the meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Prince George's County's Public Schools YouTube channel. This evening's meeting of the Board of Education is convened for the sole purpose of engaging in a question and answer session on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five superintendent's proposed operating budget, which was presented on December seventh, two thousand and twenty three. Ms. Lopez, please call through.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Adam Stafford? Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Here.
It's Adam Stafford is is there, but I think she was on mute.
Thank you. Mr. Briggs? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Thank you, Sharon.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson? Mrs. LaSaya Frecher? Dr. Juanita Miller? Dr. Steve Miller?
Here.
Steve Miller is present.
Dr. Juanita Miller?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mrs. Routh? Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Rivera Forbes? Mrs. McInnes Murray?
Present. We have our seven board members, but we can continue with the work session. Oh, I see, Mr. Briggs. We have eight. I see, Mr. Briggs. Um, Mr. Briggs, would you please? Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Thank you. Now we have eight. Thank you so much, Board Members. Okay. The question is on the adoption of the February fourth, first, two thousand and twenty four fiscal year, two thousand and twenty five superintendent's proposed operating budget work session agenda. May I have a motion? To approve the agenda?
A move that we adopt the February first, two thousand and twenty four fiscal year, twenty five superintendent's proposed operating operating budget work session.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call vote.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Dr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson? Mrs. LaSaya Frecher? Dr. Juanita Miller?
Aye.
Dr. Zippa Miller?
Present. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Murray? Mrs. Routh? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Forbes? Ms. McInnes Murray?
Aye, and we have eight in the affirmative.
Um, Mr. Jackson is here, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, you're voting. How are you voting? Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson?
We're approving the agenda, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. We have nine in the affirmative. The motion carries zero in the negative. This portion of the agenda is dedicated for budget questions and answers. Each division is allotted a total of thirty minutes for board members to ask questions and for the administration to respond. Board Members, since we have seven divisions tonight, please adhere to the two point five minute times agreement. I will now yield the floor to Board Member Adam Stafford, Chair of the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, for a brief for brief comments or opening remarks on behalf of the committee.
Um, yes, thank you so much. So I appreciate everyone for really coming together and rallying around just our advocacy on the availability payment and pushing for that not to come out of our operating budget. I know that the superintendent has also been advocating for this at the county council and state legislature level, and so I'm looking forward to some updates that will provide us with some insight in some new agreements that are on the horizon for that money to be for that particular portion of the P three to be covered from other sources. And so again, I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues for their advocacy around this really important issue so that we can keep dollars with our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you recognize the superintendent's house for comments or remarks?
Adam, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board Member Adams Stafford, for your work on the Bafa Committee. Madam Chair, as in Board Members, as you all recall, the Division of School Support and Leadership didn't have a chance to to present during our last work session. So we're going to start off with with the Division. Dr. Rashine Davis will will be able to lead or will be the point on on any questions for for this particular division. So I'll turn it back over to the Board to go ahead and start with any questions.
Thank you so much. So Board Members, do you have questions for Dr. Rashine Davis, Chief of Schools? And I'll recognize your hands in the order. I see Vice Chair Walker, Vice Chair Zippa Miller, in that order.
Um, I'm looking for Dr. Davis. I don't see her.
Dr. Davis is here, right?
I'm here.
Oh, there she is. Okay. Hi there. How are you? Um, I don't know if you recall the question that I'd asked last week by accident. I was hoping to get a follow up on that if there was any. And then the other one was, I just noticed uh, that professional contracts is doubling into next year. And just if you had any thoughts on what we were going to be doing with those funds. I hope I'm in the right section yet. Chief, uh, School and Leadership.
Um, which professional contracts?
It's under. Thank you for that question. Yes, it's on page two seventy two. Operating budget expenditures by object, subobject, and I'm looking under. Um, it's just in general, and it's under contracted services. So it says catering, printing, and then there's a line item that says professional contracted services. And it said a proposal of um, twenty, is uh, are you on page two seventy two?
I'm trying to find.
Oh, no worries. Okay, so that's one question. You can take a look at that and get back to me, um, you know, while when when you get to it. That was my primary question that I had for you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, before you move forward on the screen, Mr. Henderson's name shows up as Mrs. Quincy Boy.
Oh, Staff, could you please change his name? Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, uh, Dr. Miller. We will move now to Dr. Zippa Miller. For your question.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, maybe it's just me. I don't see Dr. Davis either.
She.
Oh, there you go. Okay, I see. Good evening.
You can't see that right?
No, but normally the speaker's on the top row. Dr. Davis, thank you so much for taking my question. So as I was going through the budget for um the division, I I have two two-part questions, so I can adhere to the two and a half minutes. So the first is, I see a program enhancement, and on page two ninety one, it says four positions. And then when I go to the next page, page two ninety two, where it has the summary of the program enhancement, it lists eighteen positions. And I wasn't when looking at the dollar amount, I'm like, hmm, I wonder, it doesn't look like eighteen positions. But I was going to ask about that. That's part A. And and then the part B says the program enhancement is to handle the needed workload to support professional development. So with that question, I wanted to just first get some clarity with the professional development that they will be doing that is different, that that would be different than coming from the, I think, the Office of Professional Learning and Leadership.
And what was your last part? I missed. You said Office of what?
So with the position on the program enhancement, it says that it would be used for supporting professional development. So I wanted to know how that would be different from what is um, what is being done with the Office of Professional Learning and Leadership?
Yeah, so the Office of Professional Learning and Leadership will be moving from the HR department over to our office. Um, and so we will have be contracted some services out to support that team who will who will be doing the development for the the principals moving forward. We're going to move our principal meetings to monthly next year um, so that we could develop our principles around all the initiatives that we have going on in the district. So that's what that's what that would be. And the eighteen positions, I believe that's um, is that for is that under student services for the private duty nursing?
It it's on page two ninety two at the bottom, and it's a summary of the of the program enhancements that started on page two ninety one. And that's why I could not account for all eighteen. Maybe that's where they came from, but I couldn't. I saw four, and then all of a sudden I see a total of eighteen.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to look into that. Give me a second.
No worries. You so I can get my time. I ran out. Um, can I make a last comment for something that you can get back to me on? I want I would like to get some clarity because what you said that you moved the office to, I guess, under your division. Um, I want some clarity because as we think about professional learning and the blueprint, speaking about the career leader ladder, sorry, career ladder. Um, I'd like to see how the alignment is because when you think about professional learning, it's a it it would be considered an HR factor when you look at some of the um audits that they've done for school system, and they normally recommend that professional learning happen under HR so that um, they can follow the career ladder and it can increase in retention. So at a later time, my time is up. If you can give me some clarity on how that would happen to ensure that that function is happening clearly, which has been listed as an HR function.
Dr. Miller, are you are you happy if they respond in writing to you to that response?
Yes, I am, because with the time, um, it would give everybody a chance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I see Dr. Kenneth Harris, and I also saw the Vice Chair saying again.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify, um, ten seconds. The entire Office of Professional Development is not moving. It's just one element uh, in reference to principals specifically, just FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you add to the response that you bring as to how you would have the alignment of the two then? Because now it's even a little the the plan behind it, so I can see the alignment in terms of professional learning systemically, because now it looks like it's split.
Well done.
Okay, Dr. Zippa Miller, are you? Okay, thank you. We will go to Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Thank you, Chair McInnes Murray. I'll be brief. How are you doing, Dr. Davis? On page two eighty nine, I see eighteen FTE for mental and school health support. Can you talk to me a bit about that, how you plan to um, utilize those resources based on um, concerns we've seen within the school system?
Yes, and I have um, members of my team from Student Services who are over those department. Um, I'm going to ask one of them to give you the details. I know there's some uh, changes happening in funding, things going from grants to having to come into our general fund with the end investor. So I think Dr. Holly is here. Um, Emily, I'll ask someone from my team to give you specifics on that.
Is that person present? Dr. Davis, the person that you're? Okay.
Uh, good evening um, to all. As far as the FTE and the program enhancements, uh, we are looking to add an additional mental health coordinator. Um, we're also looking to add additional private duty nurses, um, a secretary for our college, um, Office of College Readiness, one infant and toddler and preschool child find program nurse. Then we also are looking to add an additional um, secretary for Office of Psychological Services. So the total for those positions would equal the eighteen FTE that we see listed here.
Okay, um. Thank you. I have a follow-up question, but I think I'll send the email. I need to look at it a little more in depth, but thank you for that clarification.
Vice Chair Walker, second round.
Hi, this wasn't originally part of my question, but we have eighteen. What did we have last year? It I don't see it just on this page right here on page two eighty nine that I'm looking at. We're going from what to eighteen, please? I guess that's for Ms. Holly.
Yeah, give me one second. I'm.
Oh, no worries.
All of those departments were understaffed, and so we were giving them support to give them, you know, proper staffing because they were understaffed. But Dr. Holly could give you the numbers from this year to next year.
Yeah, I can also just look it up. I'm sure it's right here. Hold on a second. But while I while you look at that, because that would be interesting. As you said, the eighteen, when you called them out, I was thinking, wow, that is a lot. But where are we jumping from? So that would be really helpful um, to know.
I do know one of them is that we, the private duty nurses in the past were contracted, and we had a hard time filling those positions, and so many of those services went unfilled. And so the idea is to bring those in-house so that they're district staff, and then we can make sure those services are rendered.
Okay, so in part, you might have answered my second question, which was, how is this new budget um, really helping you reach your goals that you have for two thousand and twenty five? That's just going to be imperative as we look to, um, you know, assess where we're going and the the support that we have for our students.
Yes, that's exactly right. So the private duty nurse is one example of things that we we didn't have the staff in-house, and we were relying on contracted services, and they were bringing those in-house. And then there were some departments that were just understaffed, and so um, and it was having a toll on workflows, so things like secretaries not being with certain departments and having to split tasks. So we did assure like the psychological services because that was a holdup on reports getting done and things like that, college career readiness. So um, I can give you more detail, but that was about funding where we were under understaffed.
Okay, I look forward to the number, but the IEPs, um, the the folks that the single person, I think we're getting one more person that takes a look at IEPs. Does that fall under you? That follows up with IEPs?
Special letters under academics.
Thank you.
And the additional position is the mental health coordinator. Over the last two years, we've been adding one mental health coordinator, and so this would be our third mental health coordinator. In essence, the goal would be for there to be a um, a mental health coordinator for each of the regions, south, north, and central.
Um, no, I understand that. Where I was looking as I closed, because my time is over, is we're going to eighteen. I'm just wondering, what was the original number? Was it six to eighteen, two to eighteen, fifteen to eighteen, what that number looks like? You can send it to me in email. I really should be able to find it. I don't know why it's taken so long for me to find it in a budget book. But I'll also look. Thank you.
Zero to eighteen, because we didn't have any private duty nurses, and so we're going to fifteen in-house. We they were all contracted in the past, and then then those other positions, but I'll get you the exact exact number.
Okay, yeah, I'll call you because I don't know what private duty nurses do. So thank you, and where they're going to be. Thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you, Board Member Briggs.
So much, Chair McInnes Murray. Um, and good evening, Dr. Davis and Dr. Holly. Um, it's good to see you again for a second time this week, Dr. Holly. I had a question about um, mental health specialists or just, actually, I don't have a question about mental health specialists. I had a question about social emotional learning and any types of trainings that we're providing to teachers um, around social emotional learning. I know that I was having a conversation with a few of my constituents about job satisfaction and how there's a lot of research that speaks to um, social emotional learning, not only helping teachers, but also students and just staff and just the school culture overall. Are there any um, funds that are allocated to that or that'll be addressing that um, in this budget?
Um, yes, I'll ask Dr. Holly to answer that.
Excellent. Yes, um, we have, our last school year, we were able to provide an opportunity to collaborate with two universities, Mount Holyoke and also St. Elizabeth, and so we were able to have five fifty, excuse me, of our teachers to be able to be certified through Mount Holyoke, and then approximately thirty-five of our school leaders to be certified as leaders, uh, sale leaders. Uh, we're continuing in our partnership with Mount Holyoke. And uh, this upcoming school year, or really currently, uh, starting in March, we're going to be offering an opportunity for two hundred additional teachers to be sale trained. Um, and some of the staff that will be supporting that class will be those that were previously certified as mentors or as supervisors additionally. Um, in the fall, we were able to offer um, a self-paced sale course using, and all of this is using our Title IV funds uh, to be able to offer to twelve hundred of our staff members that were able to complete the uh, self-paced course. So it is quite important. And over the last year and currently in this school year, we are offering opportunities so that we can become a self-saturated uh, school district.
Okay, my last question in the twenty-three seconds is, is this is this being piloted at specific schools or is this at every school in the district?
Excellent question. Currently, it has been piloted to all schools. Um, however, in our quest to hone in on absenteeism, we actually identified six schools that are going to be invited to join this new cohort of two hundred, so that that is a part of our plan and strategy to uh, combat our attendance issue, our chronic absenteeism.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will go to Board Member Boozer Strutter.
Thank you so much, Chair McInnes Murray. Um, and um, let's see, I I'll just ask the question. I'm not sure who can best answer it. Um, I am noting an uptick in uh, extra supports needed for five oh four meetings, and I don't know if the title is compliance or facilitator or counselor, how this um, the actual title, but it does seem like it's a um, one of those staff positions that's in high demand and maybe not uh, uh, the the person or people in the current seats is not enough. So I was wondering if you could just give us a context of where we are today and um, uh, the staffing in the next in this budget. Thank you.
And Board Member Boozer Strutter, that would actually fall in in the academics division. Uh, we we did uh, have an increase uh, in the asking the budget uh, around support specifically for IEPs. I'm not sure specifically about five oh fours, but we'll get that answer for you.
Okay, I thought they were in student services. Thank you.
Yes, I know that um, over the last year and a half, we've had uh, two vacancies in our five oh four office, and so uh, we just were able to onboard one new five oh four coordinator, and then the second coordinator has been interviewed and identified, and we're just awaiting the start date. Uh, so we will uh, effective this spring, have a full, fully staffed, three persons uh, in that position to be able to uh, focus on our five oh fours.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Board Member Dr. Kenneth Harris, second round.
Thank you, Chair McInnes Murray. I'll make it quick. Hey, Dr. Holly, again. Um, my question is to piggyback off my colleague, uh, Mr. Briggs here. So I know we talked a bit about services to help train our teachers specifically around mental health and uh, the indicators around that. Are we, does this budget reflect any initiative or programs for uh, team mental health services and helping to train our students to identify those as well?
Thank you for that question. I have uh, one of our mental health coordinators online, so if you all might be able to jump in on that, just to make sure I don't miss anything. Emily or Audrey?
Good evening. Um, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's not in the current budget. We do have some efforts underway to train um, our some of our middle schools and high school students in supporting student mental health for a program called Sources of Strength. Um, so we are able to expand that program into next school year um, through a separate grant. So right now, we have ten schools that are sources of strength schools, and I believe that will expand to then uh, thirty schools in the next couple of years, but that's their grant funding.
And just to follow up.
I'm sorry, source, sorry, I forgot to mention, Sources of Strength really focuses on suicide prevention um, through focusing on a strengths-based focus to mental health and building community. Um, and it is a student-led initiative that we have counselors trained to be facilitators of sources of strength meetings, but it's very much taking the students' ideas and allowing them to incorporate mental health initiatives in their own schools in their own ways.
Okay, thank you for that. Just a quick follow-up. I don't see my time, so I don't know where I am on it, but.
I see it. Go ahead.
Okay, the the follow-up question would be, one, can you give me the ten schools that that is at currently? Um, I know you said over the next few years, we plan to roll it out to thirty, and that's under grant funding. That makes me believe we have grant funding for X amount of years. If so, how long does that grant last and cover us would be helpful for my knowledge as well.
Um, yes, I can absolutely get you all that information.
And then lastly, is there a rollout? I don't know if I said this already, but is there a rollout plan for how we have identified those additional twenty schools that we're moving toward outside of the initial ten? That would be helpful as well. Uh, but thank you for your response.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, to the ladies that are helping us tonight, Ms. Lopez and Ms. Barton, keep me straight on time, please, um, because I don't want to go too far over the thirty minutes for for a um, one of the leadership teams. We go to Board Member Brandon Jackson, first round.
Thank you, Chair Murray, McInnes Murray. Um, I just wanted to follow up on that question. Um, with sources of strength, I know you said you focused on the um, suicide prevention and things of that nature. I brought this question up before about um, uh, mental health support for athletes and athletics in general. Um, and I don't think we ever um, got to the bottom of that answer with that um, program encompass um, athletic support as well, because um, that's something that I'm really passionate about.
Yes, thank you for your passion. Um, and I I like to hear that, um, because it is an area of need. Sources of Strength really seeks to include all types of students, so um, students that are on the SGA sometimes naturally gravitate towards programs and things like that, but Sources of Strengths really encourages facilitators to include all students, you know, athletes who might be able to draw more students in from their respective sports. Um, kids that might, students that might not be involved in any activities. Um, so it's not specifically focused towards athletes, and currently, we don't have anything that I'm aware of in the works right now. Um, but we can definitely, um, I would love to to discuss with you about any ideas that you have or any programs that you have in mind and see how we can incorporate those. Um, but Sources of Strength is is very um, very focused on involving all kinds of students and and students with all interests and backgrounds, including athletes.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was, um, yeah, we definitely can have a follow-up conversation. Gotcha. Yeah, I was, um, yeah, we definitely can have a follow-up conversation about that because I was looking more for like a dedicated FTE toward, you know, athletics, like high school athletics in general, dealing with the the mental load that athletes incur. Um, you know, pursuing their respective sport. So and you know, the ups and downs and you know, all of those things that come with that. So, um, definitely we can have that conversation offline. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Add quickly to, um, board member Jackson and the rest of board members. What was not reflected in the budget, but we what we what we do have coming is the Maryland Consortium Community, a coordinated community support funding where there is a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, there's a RFP that went out and we gave fifty-eight letters of support to organizations who wanted to partner with us around mental health and behavioral health and wraparound services. And, um, so we've heard that nineteen of the fifty-eight organizations, um, have, I heard back from the state, um, and so we're just looking to figure out, you know, once that money is is granted, how we'll partner with those organizations. But that's something definitely I'll make sure that, uh, student services and as well as high school area three get together around academics and make sure that we are doing something around that. We can, we have to create, you know, MOUs with each organization regarding the work that they do with us. Once they get that grant funding, and so that's one of the MOUs that we could create. So I'll reach back out to you so that we could bring those departments together.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you. Uh, board members, I'm told that the time is up for, um, this, um, Ms. Davis's time. And I also have a question too. So can we, uh, I, the question is, can we send our questions to them written and they posted on Board Doc so that the public can see our question and the response? Or do you want to ask the questions tonight? And I saw Mr. Board Member Briggs and Board Member Boozer Struthers. What's your pleasure?
Ye- yes, um, Chair McInnes Murray, I just wanted to ask if they could share those schools where the teacher SEO program is being piloted. Um, that was the only question. So I just wanted to make sure I got that in.
Okay, thank you. And Board Member Boozer Struthers, are you fine?
Uh, it's super quick. Um, the support for all those MOUs, um, MOU, um, finalization can is taking takes very long and to get them onboard, that's all. We need more support for all those MOUs.
Thank you. Vice Chair Walker, I'll give it to you. And really quick, I will ask for a report of all the coordinators that we have in the local schools. I know that we have them in the community schools, but if not by names, I'm looking for numbers, um, for all of the schools in the in our county. And also parent assistance or any assistance that are in those local schools to assist principals, what you've proposed and what you have onboard today. So if we can get that, uh, a little report, we appreciate that. I would appreciate that. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So now we will, uh, also board members, we're going to move now to Mrs. Quincy, Board Chief of Staff. And board members who have questions, raise your hand and I will note you. I see one hand, Vice Chair Walker.
It is super quick, not to worry. Um, the question that I have really is around, and I was trying to find it, I think maybe I did. But I'm looking at the, um, salaries and I do see an increase, um, that is there and I I struggle with trying to find where it is, but I believe, is it some somewhere in appeals? Is that where I should be looking?
We did add, um, so there's a couple of places where you might find time, uh, the increase, uh, number one, and I'll let Robin speak to this. We did, uh, add to, um, hearing administrators, uh, to address, um, uh, the appeals caseload and to be able to support with that. Um, uh, and then in addition, uh, to that, we did, um, request for a project, uh, a project manager in the board office. Um, and so those are the two places, but we we did that by consolidating one of the secretary positions. You see that?
Nice to hear.
Yeah, I guess if we did it with consolidations, maybe it's just that their salaries are slightly higher, um, and that's where I'm seeing the the difference. You can get back to me on that. I can talk to you offline on that, but what I'm seeing is an increase there and I I can't quite find, um, exactly where it is, so.
Okay, uh, and I'm happy to point that out. We also have, uh, Ms. Robin Seabrook, uh, on, uh, who, uh, may be able to to address your question as well.
Right, and we just just a quick correction. We had, um, we had one vacancy in the appeals office and then we added a position. So one, um, was just a, we're just replacing a person who was always there and then we are adding a position. I don't see, I don't, I don't know whether the salary increase is reflected here in my section of the budget um, from last year till this.
And I'm. I'm looking at page ninety-three and then again on page ninety-six.
Okay.
Just as a reference. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Chair Walker, you're you're finished. Okay, we will go to Dr. Zappora Miller.
Good evening. Thank you. Mine's a follow-up on Vice Chair Walker's because I saw the same. And so my question is, when there's an added position, wouldn't that be reflected unless in a program enhancement? So should I be looking for program enhancement? And that's probably why when, uh, Vice Chair asked, that's when it said it was an added position, I started to look for program enhancement and I couldn't find it.
And I think that's primarily because we, um, introduced it as an, um, out of cycle so that we could begin to post it, but it is reflected in the fiscal year twenty-five, uh, proposed budget. Does that answer your question?
No, I was just wondering where we'd find, where we would find the program enhancement in the budget to reflect the new position that, um, Ms. Seabrook just spoke about.
Let me get, let me get back to you, um, on that, if that's okay.
Thank you. Yes, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I see no other hand. Board members, I see no other hands unless you're on a different page. Help me to know if you have a hand up and I don't see you. Okay, let me go back over here. All right. Somebody's talking. Okay, I don't see any other hand. So, um, Mrs. Quincy Boyd, thank you. So we will move on to Mr. Donnell Henderson. General Counsel. Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Question, board members, do you have any question?
Yep.
I see no hands. I will wait. Okay, Mr. Henderson, it looks like, uh, there are no questions for you.
Thank you so much.
So we will go to Dr. Kristi Baldwin, Human Resources. Board members, do you have any questions of human resources? Dr. Zappora Miller? I see your hand, your. Dr. Zappora Miller, your hand was up. It's not, no questions?
I do have a question. I'm sorry. I actually have a couple of questions, but I'll ask the first one in first round. The first one has to do with, uh, uh, resident teacher program and the support that's given to conditional teachers. Knowing that we've been in a teacher shortage, and this is something that you can probably give, um, the the data back to me later. Um, but are there any school or schools where you find that they are over seventy-five percent of the, um, teachers who are conditional? Um, and the reason I ask, I was gonna just couple it with, um, what do the supports look like in terms of, I was looking at the budget for them in schools like that where most of their schools are staffed with conditional teachers?
Uh, we will provide that in a follow-up response so that you can have the data. One clarification I want to make is the resident teacher program has a different teaching certificate than the conditional educator. Um, so we'll break down that information and provide it.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, I see no other hands. Oh, I see two hands. Board member, uh, Pamela Boozer Struthers and Board Member Briggs.
Thank you so much. Um, uh, I'm noting the, um, uh, equity, um, school leads enhancement. And I was wondering if we could hear from Dr. Reese about the, um, uh, goals and outcomes, um, expected from the expansion. Thank you.
Absolutely. I believe Dr. Reese is on tonight.
I see him. Dr. Reese?
I'll be there in one second.
Okay. And you had a second question while we're waiting for him to come back? Yeah.
I do, I do not.
Okay, then we'll wait.
Thank you. So the salary enhancement for the equity leads, um, was an increase in order to honor the hard work that the school-based equity leads are doing, um, inside the classroom and outside of the classroom. So since two thousand fourteen, um, people in positions like that had a stipend of about twelve hundred dollars. And there was an ask to increase it to eighteen hundred dollars because for over a decade, it's been about, um, the same amount of money. So when we think about the professional development that they are leading connected to the equity dashboard and really helping the school administration have a tight focus on their focus area around equity and improvement, um, we would expect in terms of outcomes that we see more people willing to sign up for the role because right now we have about twenty-five percent, twenty percent of schools who do not have a school-based equity lead. And we will be able to see them just being honored by having a higher stipend for the hard work that they've been doing over the last two to three years.
Yeah, thank you. I I really appreciate that and that we're investing in valuing those positions. Um, as, you know, given you just said some schools may have had someone at least for two years, what what would you say is are some of the top um, impacts to the students for having the position in the building and as we continue to look at this as a model?
Uh, thank you for asking that question as well. So I can think about a lot of different schools where because of the quality of professional learning that the school-based equity leads are driving in the schools, we have instances of students who are LGBTQ plus, for example, um, feeling more welcomed and that they belong more in their school because there's more awareness around what their needs are. We've had a focus on black and brown boys this year and last year it was a newcomers and I can't tell you the number of staff members who see me when I come to schools who say that the PD is really making a difference and impact in how they are understanding their students' needs. I mean, we have a lot of different areas of focus for professional learning and PGCPS and I see that I'm almost out of time, but I do want to say that hearing from their colleagues about how better to support students is what's really helping, um, more teachers pay attention to how to support, um, the equity philosophy.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Briggs.
Actually lowered my hand, but I but I realized it was not a comment, just wanted to say, um, a a big thank you to, um, Dr. Baldwin for taking time to speak with me a few weeks ago about HR concerns that I had and they were coming up from the community. And, um, and, um, that I'm also looking forward to kind of uh, hopefully getting some additional suggestions from you, um, via email. So just wanted to flag that instead of sending you an email, um, just to tell you that it was easier. Sorry.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chair Walker.
Hey there, Dr. Baldwin. How are you today? I'm good. How are you? Going great, thanks. Hey, the quick question that I have for you is really around, um, salaries as well. So I think I have the same one for everyone around salaries and the increase that you see there. I'm really looking to understand for the increases that you have. Again, how do you believe that that's going to help us to progress forward for our students? I'm sure you have rationale around that. And if you compare it to our last year, um, how is this going to be a little different in what we see for overall results and our staffing, um, particularly in, um, professional leadership? I'm sorry, professional learning and leadership. I'm really interested in that and what we're doing differently, um, that you're gonna, we're gonna start to see some things trickle down to, um, our scholars. Thanks. You're welcome. You gonna tell me or you? You can get back to me. I'm just wondering.
Yes, I'm gonna actually. Yes, no, I will follow up with the salaries because I just definitely want to check with, uh, Chief Howell because I think we will be seeing salaries because ASA, PPGCEA, all those members are still going to get COLAs and STEPS. So I need to figure out if that's also factored, um, so that it answers the questions that you have for across the, uh, district. Um, and then in regards to the, uh, excuse me, professional learning and leadership, I'd like to follow up with that in writing to piggyback on the information that was asked from the chief of school support and leadership part. So we'll outline that together and provide you a response.
Okay, thank you. And it's really just looking at what are we doing differently as you look into the future? Um, what are we doing differently from what you've seen in the past to really, um, enhance the learning and leadership so that it trickles down to, um, our scholars and I that just, you just let me know what that looks like. I have some thoughts and I'm happy to talk to you about it as well. Thanks. You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Juanita Miller.
Hi, um, I have to extend apologies. I had to take a call and I missed the opportunity to share with, uh, the, uh, uh, information about the five oh four person. I met at, well, I didn't meet her, but she was at the, uh, NDSA conference and, uh, she indicated that she was running a one-person office. And, um, I wanted to know what's going to be done to provide her some assistance.
Uh, Board Member Miller, are you asking me to provide that, um, answer or follow back up with the, um, school support and leadership, the five oh four office?
The five oh four office. That's why I apologize for missing out on.
Okay.
Patient.
I'll make sure that we get that information, um, back to you in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to, uh, Board Member Zappora Miller.
Good evening again. Um, so this is a joint question and I'm sorry it comes back up again, but I'm still grappling with the division of professional learning in two different divi- divisions. Because when I looked at the FTEs, they're being cut from professional learning. But we have an increase of a million dollars in transformational leadership. So what it looks like is when we move just principals or principal professional learning to transformational learning, it's increasing the salary by four FTEs. So then I'm wondering what is being done differently? And would we be able, this is just a wondering and you may need to get back with me because I know it involves two divisions. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be efficient to look at what is hap- whether if it would have been, uh, a cost neutral by le- leaving it in HR? Um, what it looks like to me and what what I envision, and I I would like you to just give me the perspective because I know you're the experts, that you're you're training the principals to oversee schools and they oversee teachers and support staff. The teachers and support staff have been trained in a different division. So, um, and then it's costing more to put it in a different division. So from a bu- budgetary standpoint, I'm just wondering, as you're looking at a system, this one individual who oversees staff and the staff they oversee in one division and then they're in a in another division and the there's an increase in cost to do that.
Um, I thank you for the opportunity to respond back to you in writing, uh, Dr. Davis, and I will collaborate to explain uh, the new organization under school support and leadership of transformation and the professional learning component of the school leadership that will fo- uh, transition over. So and in conjunction with how that will support teachers as well. So we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for any board, from any board members? Because I have a couple. And I see no additional hands. So Vice Chair, I'll give it to you. Uh, my question, and it's not really a question. Once again, I'm asking for data. So, uh, for the schools, I would like to know how many principals we have onboard for each school? How many vice principals we have onboard for each school? How many teachers we have in each school? Because that helps me to see where the gap is, wherever the gap is. So if you could get those, that information uh, somebody talk, saying something. Okay. If you could get that information, if you want to address it tonight, that's fine, but I thought maybe you'd like to do it in a report.
Uh, we can do it in in a in a report for you, uh, but I will say that our principal positions are fully staff, um, so, but again, we'll provide that in a report.
Okay, are the teachers fully staffed?
Now, damn, you know that.
Okay, then so so then in addition, you need to help us to see how the services are going to be provided to the students.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's the important piece. Okay?
Okay.
Oh, I see Board Member Boozer Struthers. I'm through, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I I apologize. I want to get my thoughts together because I do, I I want to say to Dr. Baldwin, a big thank you for the implementation of some of the ideas of recruitment and expansion of your staff from last year. That was a really big discussion point in these meetings and I'd be remiss not to thank you here um, publicly for for listening and working with the board on on some, uh, you know, what what we thought bringing more
publicly for, for listening and working with the board on, on some, you know, what, what we thought bringing more recruitment support to your team. And I saw it in the community. I participated in some of the events for multi-language speaker recruitment and other opportunities. I saw the recruitment everywhere this past year and, um, just want to thank you for, for working with it, with us. And I hope, I hope those enhancements did help your division, um, this year and going forward. Thanks. Thank you for the support. And it, it did. And we look forward to getting better. We know that we have a lot of areas to grow, but Superintendent House has also been supporting us as well. So, um, just want to say the best is yet to come and thank you all for always supporting us.
Thank you. Vice Chair Walker, I'll give it back to you one more time because I don't know if this question is for Mr. Zuckerman or for, uh, Ms. Baldwin, Dr. Baldwin. I'm interested in the security personnel that we have in schools. So, and whether we are understaffed there or not. Now, is that a question for you that you add to the report or is that a question for Mr. Zuckerman?
Actually, the, uh, security falls under operations. Um, we did enhancements. I don't know if, I apologize for my absence at the last work session. I don't know if that was a question that was brought up. If it was not, I can collaborate with Dr. Coleman, um, and provide a response in writing.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right. Vice Chair, I'll take it back. Any more questions for, uh, Dr. Baldwin? Human resources, anyone? Oh, wait a minute. I don't see any and we're doing really great on time, guys. So thank you so much. Uh, now we will move to, um, Dr. Andrew Zuckerman. Information technology. Questions, boy members? No questions?
Mickens Murray, um, I just want to clarify, were you speaking of security from the standpoint of security, um, individuals or were you speaking of, uh, because I heard you mentioned, uh, Dr. Zuckerman, uh, security from the standpoint of cybersecurity?
No, I'm speaking of personnel in those school buildings. People. Okay, thanks. Uh, no questions of Dr. Zuckerman? Okay, Vice Chair, I'll give it to you because I have a question. Mr. Zuckerman, how often do we turn over computers in, um, the system? In other words, there's a life for computers and you get new ones, old ones, and you pass it on. What, what is that cycle like? And is that something you need to write to us? Or you, can you speak to it tonight?
No, I'm happy to answer it. Um, we have a four-year, uh, business rule. So our business rule is four years and then we initiate a refresh for users after four years. I just want to caveat that by saying some computers can go beyond that and not every employee necessarily wants to exchange their computer after four. Um, um, uh, my computer is a good example of that, but, um, but across the board is four years. Chromebooks as well. That's our, that's our target is four years.
Okay. And as we look at this new budget, I know that a lot of parents, when their children lose a Chromebook or one gets broken, there's a cost. Is there anywhere that we, we can offset that cost or grant or something? Because it seems to me that children are without books for months. And that shouldn't be palatable to what we're trying to do.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's rare when we find situations where students are without Chromebooks, there's, there's usually some sort of inventory reconciliations that's needed at the, at that schoolhouse. And we have sent a team out to do that. To answer your question, um, there's a lot of different strategies that we use with, with families if, um, if they're not able to pay a repair fee, um, uh, payment plans, loaners. We are working on updating our policies and procedures for next year to address this issue. And, uh, we anticipate, uh, being able to talk with principals about that right around spring break. And, uh, right now it's, um, if a student damages their device, it often can cost almost $200 to repair, but the damage that the fee that we assess is $30. So it's a, it's a, it's a significantly discounted, uh, fee, but we certainly understand that that's a challenge. So we're looking at ways to make that different. We're looking at ways to enhance that for the future. So.
Yes, I guess what I'm thinking about is how do we keep a book in a child's hand while we're working out that other stuff? And is the information readily available on your webs, on our website?
Yeah, I mean, we have, yes, it's on the website. We have communicated with principals. Again, if there's a situation where a child is without a device, it's not because we don't have the device and it's not because we don't have the ability to get the device. There's, there's a process breakdown there and we need to work with, um, that's particular school, um, where that's happening.
Okay, I appreciate that. I take it back, Vice Chair Walker, and I see board member Briggs here.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Mickens Murray, and good evening, Dr. Zuckerman. I just want to second what Chair Mickens Murray said about that schools withholding the, the, the Chromebooks or whatever it is. Because I actually had a parent who was having a significant economic challenge and their child wasn't able to get it. And it would be almost better if there was like a a way of tabulating all that and saying, I mean, of course, you know, that'd be harder to pay $500 at the end if you kind of rack up bills. But at least that wouldn't kind of impede the student's ability to get through all of the work that they have to do. Because it seems like you're kind of a double negative there. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was that, um, I was just curious. I know you talked to us during the last budget cycle about the pandemic funding coming to an end and concerns that you had there. Can you just speak more to, is it hopeful in the future? How are you feeling about, you know, continuing to be able to update and address all of the tech issues that schools have, um, without that essential funding?
Yeah. So I'm feeling good through next fiscal year because the ESAR funding expires on September 30th, 2024. So we will be able to leverage that funding, the remaining funds to purchase one more year of Chromebooks for refresh. For FY26, uh, Lisa Howell, our CFO, and I've had extensive conversations about planning out for FY26 and beyond. Most likely, at least for students, we're gonna probably need to make some policy changes just with, with respect to how we approach take-home devices. Every district that I talk to is in the same situation and looking at possibilities and scenarios of keeping more devices in schools and students going home with devices on an as-needed basis. Um, of course, if, if a student needs one, they will always have one and have access to it. So we're in the process right now of planning for that for FY26 and perhaps expanding, uh, the number of schools that we're piloting right now, cart-based approach in nine schools. Where students, the devices stay in the building unless specifically requested by a parent. So these are the strategies that we're going to have to test out over next year, uh, to make this financially sustainable for the long haul. And, um, and we're a good company. That's what every district is having to do right now, um, just to make the, the dollars last. Just one aside, I would just say to every board member, um, if there's any specific issue, uh, where there's a student who's without a device, please just, uh, share that with Mr. House, Ms. Boyd and me. We will get right on that. There, there's, uh, depending on the circumstances, um, we, we obviously can support that. We just need to, uh, know where that is and dig into it to understand the issue.
Yeah, thank you for that. And also when I, at the end of that story is that you did support and we did get it addressed and the parent was able to get the Chromebook back. So you did support when that happened. That was a while ago. You probably don't remember it. But, um, and I'm just going to stop talking, but if you have time to share about the digital divide, if there's any still things around internet connectivity.
Yeah, I do, I do want to share that. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because, because this is very, very significant, very important. And I think something from a legislative policy perspective, we're going to need to grapple with. We have been leveraging for the last two years, the FCC's Federal Affordable Connectivity Program, ACP. So in the pandemic, we paid for using grant funds, internet connectivity for families who needed it. As that funding expired, the federal government dramatically expanded the Affordable Connectivity Program where, where families in need could essentially, um, get home internet access for free, either broadband or with a hotspot. Our preference is broadband, um, but if for a reason broadband is not possible, we were, um, essentially giving, uh, hotspots to our families and then leveraging the Affordable Connectivity Program, um, to get them connected. As of February 7th, that program is not accepting any new enrollees. That is going to have a dramatic impact on public education. The FCC is predicting that by April, they're going to run out of funding for that program. If that funding runs out, that's a big problem for us, for our families. Um, and so we're going to need to, uh, rally with other school districts and I suspect, uh, we will. I, I also suspect that the feds will continue to fund it through the end of the calendar year. There'll be some emergency legislation that continues that funding. But I just want to flag that for the board, for us, this, this is really hot off the presses. Um, and we haven't had a chance to fully digest it as a school administration yet, but I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Briggs, because it is hugely important that the federal government continue that program, um, to support our families.
Board members, are there any other questions? And, uh, if not, Vice Chair, I'll give it to you again. I have one more question, uh, for you, Mr. Zuckerman. The use of, uh, the Chrome, do we have any mechanism for parents to, to learn how to use them? The only reason I ask that is because I'm technology challenged, so I'm sure.
Yeah. So, oh, so schools do tech nights. Um, we partner with Sheila Jackson for her, um, uh, for her, uh, parent academies. Um, and, uh, we have opportunities, uh, for example, at the, um, at the, uh, the parent centers, um, where we have technicians there to support parents. But the, the, the reality is what we've been saying for a couple of years now is, was we really want to empower and equip our school teams to be able to work with families in this regard. And so given the ubiquity of Chromebooks and the technology, um, I would venture to say that, that, uh, if a parent, uh, needs some help with a Chromebook, that any school will be able to provide that and we certainly can partner with the school to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right. Seeing the further hands, I guess we will move on to Superintendent House.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, what I will say is that I want to thank my, my executive cabinet for really sticking with the mission of, uh, providing, you know, the transformative experience anchored in equity. Uh, they have really met the challenge in reference to this budget. And, and ensuring that we're aligned and, uh, supporting the strategic plan through our core services. Uh, so of course, a majority of, uh, the remaining questions, if you have, my chief financial officer and I, who is the, the last person on deck, would be glad to answer any additional questions.
Okay, I was wondering because I, I was thinking, okay, we're going to tell you what to do in your office, but anyway, it's all right. We will now board, oh, I see Vice Chair Walker. She has a question for you.
I have several. Thank you. Hi, how are you? They're super easy. They're super easy. Um, thank you Superintendent House. As I was looking through, uh, and just listening, you know, I just would love to challenge you to look at all of the additional FTEs that we are requesting throughout each of the chiefs. Really detailed. As you know, I know, you know, beyond anybody else that we are in a deficit and I just don't want us to be too top-heavy. We absolutely know what we need in order to make sure it, we have the right resources for our scholars. Absolutely. So I'm, I'm just challenging you to just take a look across the board at all of the additional FTEs and just ensure that those are the ones we need. Is there any way to com- combine without compromising, uh, the vision that you have?
Absolutely. Question. Uh, one of the things that, uh, my, my cabinet and I are doing are, are putting together, um, I would say just in case contingency budgets. So we'll be going through, taking a look and, and doing just, just that. I actually, uh, myself and Chief of Staff Boyd, uh, set, set aside time in our next couple cabinet meetings to, uh, to focus on that effort.
Excellent. Um, excellent. I could say more, but it's only reiterating a point of where we are. So thank you very much for doing that, especially when we have teacher shortages, et cetera. We definitely want to look at that. So if you can get that back to us specifically, uh, the board, that would be great, just so we could take a look at it and make, and just, you know, overall. Then, uh, where you end up. I don't want to look at the details of what you're looking at, but anyway, these are the FTEs by department and this is what we're going to or what we can do after we took a look. Thank you. The other piece that I wanted to talk about was, um, the food and nutrition, food and nutrition, which falls underneath, underneath you. You know, food and nutrition is a big deal for a lot of our scholars. A lot of our scholars, this is the only meal, as you know, that they get for the day. As well as healthy options for, you know, veganism is increasing, a lot of different dietary needs and restrictions. And so one of the things I would love for you to be able to do is take a look and see what needs to be true, whether it's by way of grants or whatever, in order to really feed our kids and make it affordable for everyone, which means zero cost. That's where I'm going with that. Um.
That is, uh, one of the things that we, we will continue to look at is the, the universal free lunch opportunities for students, uh, falls under the operations department, but, but we can provide some additional details around who's, uh, who's qualified and, and whether we are moving forward with expansion efforts or not.
Thank you. And if we, um, can leverage any outside resources in order to help us to fund something that might look like help for some of our scholars as well. Because we do have this working class poor, right? They don't qualify for, uh, Medicaid or state services. And they, you know, but they don't make enough to make ends meet, but they're trying. So thank you so much. Now wait for the second one, for my second round. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will go to, uh, Dr. Sappora Miller.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm not sure who's shit, who this question goes to, whether it's Superintendent House or whether it's, uh, Board Chair Mickens Murray, just as we round up first, uh, well, because, uh, it's a logistics question. So as the team has been really, really diligent in providing us responses due to time, many of us asked questions which they need to get back to us and I know they probably need time. In the same vein, um, Obama has given us a timeline for amendments. So some of those responses would inform some of the amendments, whether we do or don't, uh, put them in. So I'd like to just, uh, have some idea or consideration of how much time before we get our responses so that we are able to respond to the, um, amendments? And two, do we need to send our questions in writing and to whom so that they all are collected in a central area?
Okay, what I'm, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead. Go ahead, uh, Chair.
What I would say is the questions that we're asking tonight, I don't think that we need to write them. I think they're being captured by staff and I think that staff will give them to the superintendent or people on the leadership team. I was going to ask at the end of this meeting, when were they going to get back to us in the same vein, uh, Dr. Miller? That we need to put in amendments and we know that we have a cutoff time. So I was going to do that, but if somebody wants to address that now Superintendent House.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Mickens Murray. We do have a, a process that, uh, that we collaborate collaboratively set up in terms of the timing. Chief Boyd, would you like to share kind of the timing and expectation? And we will get back.
Yes. And actually, um, Board Chair, I was just going to, um, add one little piece of that, which is that, um, Chief Howell, um, and her team have set internal deadlines for executive cabinet members to respond so that we could get you all, um, answers. Um, and as you all know, she's, um, been a liaison, um, for the Obama, um, committee. So we will make sure that you have them in time to make an informed decision.
Appreciate that. Planning is everything. Dr. Miller?
And I just, I just want to, I just want to add to that as well because as you all know, the amendments are supposed to be due tomorrow. And so we are a bit challenged because we're receiving many of the questions tonight for the first time, which makes it difficult to be able to turn around responses that may impact what you're planning to do as it relates to amendments. Still need to be able to move the process forward because we have, you know, an internal, um, timeline that allows administration to look at the amendments that are being proposed. Um, so perhaps what I would recommend is providing your amendments based off of the information that you know. Um, there were questions that were asked at the last work session that we're working to provide those responses to you in very short order, but the question's being asked today. We're going to need some time to obviously respond to those as well. But provide your amendments based off of the proposed timeline. We do have a process to review those internally, provide responses back to your amendments and then get those to the Obama committee, um, for that meeting, which is going to take place on February 14th. So, and then right after that is the third work session where of course the board will come together to vote on, um, board amendments. So we, we really are sort of tight on our timeline here and we'll do our best as we can to understand the amendments that are being submitted that may be tied to questions that you haven't had answered yet. Uh, but we'll do our best to answer your question you're asking. But we'll do our best to answer your question you're asking today and sort through the amendments that are being provided.
No, I appreciate that, because I was thinking the same thing, that getting the answers to the reports that you might give us might mitigate whatever we were going to put in an amendment. But we are, we are capable of putting in amendments and seeing where that takes us with the information that we've asked for tonight. So I appreciate that, Ms. Howell. Thank you. I see two hands. I see Board Member Shella Adam Stafford, followed by Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you to all of my colleagues that have reached out with questions about their amendments. I know that I've made myself available to some folks to do just like a small one-on-one to help them with their amendments. So if there's anything that I can do, or Dr. Harris, and I'm sure he'll talk more about that in a moment, to support you with developing the language around your amendment, please, please reach out to me, and we can set up some time to support you as you develop them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Kenneth Harris.
Yeah, we were, we were saying a similar thing there. Also, following this meeting, we'll be sending out a, an email briefly from Obama. I and Chair Adam Stafford, we're going back and forth a little today, so just expect to hear back from us. But the door is always open in regard to help with amendments. So just know we're here for you.
Thank you so much. Now we'll go to Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, thank you so much. This is just to close out the last piece that I was talking about, because my, my time ran out. Just want to, Superintendent House, if the budget, just to confirm if this budget that's already presented to us includes, one, the commitments within your 90-day plan that clearly are going to go beyond the 90-day plan for your vision? And two, back to food and nutrition. I want to ensure, I just want to ask you to ensure that the funding that we already have inside of the plan will help us to lend ourselves to scholars that have dietary restrictions. Again, vegan options, things like that. For instance, my son doesn't eat cheese, for instance. And there's never anything that's the, I won't say never, that's not fair. That's not fair. So the point is, if there's things that can be available for them, okay? That would, those are the two questions that I have.
For the first portion of your question, or the first question that you had, yes. And the, the, the second one, I will definitely take that conversation up with my, my operations and child nutrition team. We know that, you know, we're, we're in a different day and age, and choice is, is extremely important, and we want to make sure that our scholars have, you know, what's needed in, in order to, to provide the, the nourishment for them to, to finish the day.
Thank you so much. So there's no data that I'm requesting. It's more just to confirm that inside of the budget presented to us today, it's already included that these options and choices will be available. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Board members, last call. Any questions for Superintendent House? I see no more hands. Okay, then we will go to our last person, Ms. Lisa Howell, Chief of Business and Management Services. Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Lisa Howell? Okay, this is great. So, no questions for, oh, I see a hand, Dr.
Make a quick one question for you. So, Chief Howell, I know we've had some, some, not struggles, but some, some challenges and some, some stories in the past regarding payroll. Are there any, are there any enhancements within this budget that'll speak directly to the challenges we face with it?
Thank you for that question. Payroll processing is a challenging area, and it's a lot of components that goes into that. It's the timekeeping portion that originates at the actual site where the employee works. Then it's the actual approval of that process. It's the processing of the employee's salary. There's a lot of variables that goes into payroll that, you know, across the board is something that, in terms of how we're structured and how we're managing the processing of payroll on a going-forward basis, we have been looking at changes we're actually making this year in terms of the structure of that organization and looking at some process improvements for that organization. But it's, it's not as simple as just looking at one area and one office, because it's, you know, as I said, you know, in the beginning, it does span across multiple different areas. We've been meeting collaboratively across the divisions around areas where we have had some issues with payroll specifically, to address those issues and working with our labor partners as well to communicate those changes that we are looking to make. So it's certainly something that we're looking at in '24, that will continue on to '25.
Dr. Harris?
Okay. Yep, thank you for that. That was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Adam Stafford, followed by Board Member Zippor Miller and Vice Chair Walker. That order.
Thank you so much. I know I had sent in a few questions about our fund balance, and we've had some questions come up in our pop-up sessions, and just generally from the community about what constitutes our fund balance and sort of what those funds have been used for, what they can be used for, how we're utilizing it this year. And I was wondering if you could just provide us with some context and information about that?
Sure. So the written response is provided in, on board logs for the community. They actually want to see details that really kind of get into the specifics of it. But the fund balance is the result of an excess of revenue versus expenditures at the end of a fiscal year. So any excess revenues that are not spent fall to the fund balance, generally speaking, as it relates to unrestricted funds. So when you think about the fund balance, and it's highly regulated in terms of the classification and categorization of the activity in the fund balance. For us, we have three broad buckets relating to our fund balance. It's food and nutrition services, student and student activity funds, all that falls under our special revenue fund. We have capital fund, and then we have a general fund balance. So it's the general fund balance that folks tend to really focus on in terms of what that is actually used for. Within the general fund balance, it's then further classified into different categories as well. So you have a portion of it that's non-spendable. It's tied to like prepaid items and inventory. So we, you know, order goods and services that may be held in our warehouses and then sent out to schools later on. Can't spend that portion of the fund balance, which is why it's considered non-spendable. And then you have the next category that relates to your restricted component. And as I said before, that's the food and activity fund, the capital fund as well. And then you get into the unrestricted portion of the fund balance. And within that, you have the assigned piece. There's an unassigned piece. And then there is a committed piece. So you think about our operating budget. There is a component of our operating budget revenues that includes funding from all of our different sources, federal, state, local, and use of fund balance. That committed number is in the fund balance. So in our '24 budget, as an example, one of our funding sources is the money that we have sitting in our fund balance of $70 million. So that is part of that committed number. And then there is the amount that is assigned for future use. So in our current fund balance, again, as of this past fiscal year, 2023, there's a portion of that's been earmarked for future years. So I talked about the amount that's earmarked for the current year. There's an amount that's been set aside for future years as well. And then the last piece of that unrestricted section relates to an amount that's unassigned. And that's really kind of the, the smaller component of it that doesn't have any restrictions or commitments tied to it. It's important to keep in mind that within the overall general fund balance, that unrestricted piece, the guidelines really require us to have two months of operating expenditures included in our fund balance. Right now, we have about a month's worth of operating expenses in our fund balance. So we really are mindful of the balance that we have available and the use of those funds, and to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible about how deep we dig into that fund balance reserve.
Board Member Adam Stafford, are you finished? Your time is up.
Thank you. That was it.
Thank you so much. We have Dr. Zippor Miller, Vice Chair Walker, and then we'll go to Board Member Boozer Strutter. That order.
I, I lowered my hand because my question was asked. Thank you so much.
Okay, good. Then we'll go to Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you. My question will be brief, as just to recap. Thank you, Board Member Adam Stafford, for asking that. I really had a question around the, the fund balance, but Doctor, Doctor, Ms. Howell, I'm, I'm edging you up there. Ms. Howell, there's a perception that the school board has unused funds that we can leverage on deficits that we have. And part of it was the thought about this fund balance. And so I just want to ask specifically, well, I think you answered some of that, that we need a reserve of our two months there. But then there's that piece right there that's really unrestricted, and we're able to do a couple of things with. And I was just hoping that you could talk to us about what we've either leveraged that for in the past or what we are hoping to save it for, what the, what the, what the crux of that piece right there is. Thank you so much.
Sure. So as I stated before, we have, within the fund balance, we have our general fund balance, and that's really the part of the fund balance where could potentially be utilized for different purposes, potentially. Much of that is still earmarked, committed, or restricted, but it isn't our general fund. So there's a portion that I said before, which is non-spendable, inventories and such, we can't touch that. There is the portion that is committed for the use in our current budget. So again, you think about our '24 budget, that's one of our funding sources is use of fund balance for the current year. Then there's an amount within our general fund that relates to the use of our fund balance in future budgets. And so you may recall, when we were discussing our '25 proposed budget, I outlined the fact that we have money that has been committed for future use in our fund balance that's tied to the stabilization of our negotiated agreements that went into place a few years ago. And we set aside in our fund balance around $175 million. We are year three into that plan of using that fund balance. There's also a portion, which I didn't speak to before, that's sitting in our unrestricted fund balance, or general fund balance, I should say, but it is included in the unrestricted number that relates to encumbrances. Again, those funds have already been encumbered, and we can't utilize those either. So then the last bucket, and that I've mentioned before, it's that small piece that has not been assigned or permitted or restricted in any way. Our total general fund balance is about $263 million. The amount of that, out of that, that has not been set aside is only $30 million. And you think about the fact we have a $3 billion budget, that's 1% of our budget, and we need to have two months of operating expenses. So it's really not a lot of flexibility. We've already assigned and committed to use the fund balance that we already have. So it's certainly not something that we'll look to use even further in the '25 budget, and it's not intended, and this is really important, to be used to support an ongoing cost. It's really one-time cost. You think about the fact you have a savings account. You don't use your savings account to pay for your mortgage or to pay for your current note. That's a recurring cost. Maybe a one-time repair might come out of your savings account. But once you dip into it, you have to then replenish it at some point. So it's not something that, that can sustain an ongoing cost on an annual basis.
Thank you. That's very clear. Thank you.
Board Member Boozer Stafford?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm, I thank my colleagues for raising this conversation, and certainly the board has had this for many years. And I remember that, you know, in, in 20, while we were talking in 2019 and 2020, there was the same question of why, why is the Board of Education sitting on this fund balance? And I'm seeing the, the, under the 2019 column, 203 million, which at the time, our budget was just over like 2.2 billion. We've grown significantly. And can, can you, what, what I, at the time, you know, thought we should be looking at is that, that you think of these as rainy day funds, like that you don't want to spend them unless there's an emergency at the time we couldn't even conceive of, that it could be a pandemic, that we thought economic recession was something that we could think of. Do you, when, when you look at this, for these years of how we've managed this, outside of the fact that clearly it should be more, have we made the right decisions over these years? Like, is, is given, given minus the context that we're at one month instead of two? What, how has this board been performing with the, the decisions about this?
Yes, that's a great question. Over the last few years, as you've seen in our budgets, as I said before, we always have a portion of it that's used as a revenue source to help pay for operations for that current year. Because of some of the other changes that we have during the year, oftentimes it's just savings resulting in that current year, whether it's salary lapse or change in timeline relating to contracted services. As you know, we come to the board, and we do a financial review several times during the year. So when you develop your budget, you put together your best guess of all the planned things that you know about, but there's always unexpected items that come up. And fortunately, we've been able to manage and navigate through those changes for the most part, even when it comes to some times that are, that those events could be significant. We've been able to fund them through savings in other areas, through a financial review within the current year's budget and not having to utilize our fund balance. But on occasion, we have had to actually dip into that a little bit, and it's planned in our budget to use a portion of it. But even in those years when we planned to use it, we haven't always had to utilize it, because we've been able to manage the operating budget that's been appropriate for that current year without having to dip into that. And I think the challenge for us is being able to build it up back to the point where it really needs to be closer to that two-month timeframe. But we've been really able to manage well within our appropriated budget for that current year.
Thank you so much for the additional context.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any other questions? If not, Vice Chair Walker, I'll give it to you and ask one question. If we were to have the two-month reserve, what would the percentage of the budget be, Ms. Howell?
I would represent, I don't know. I mean, certainly I can provide that to you. I mean, just generally speaking, we're, we're about a couple hundred million short of where we need to be. But again, we kind of look at it on a monthly basis in terms of what our operating budget would look like for a couple of months, as opposed to a percentage. So we, you can manage it a couple of different ways. We kind of look at where do we need to be on a, you know, two-month basis in terms of what we should have set aside in there. But I can give you that specific percentage if you're curious to know what that would look like as a percentage of our total overall budget.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I know when we look across the Maryland, I know the various districts, they hold a percentage of the budget back, and it just helps with a comparison. Because someone had told me we were holding 13% of our budget. Tonight, you happened to put that in definite perspective, because I was getting nervous. So, so I appreciate this conversation as well. Okay. Well, I see a board, a hand, Vice Chair, I'll take it back, and I see Board Member Briggs.
Thank you so much, Chair Mickens Murray, and thanks for the presentation, Ms. Howell. I just had a question about something that we had talked about last year. I think it was towards the end of fall, about investments that the school district makes, perhaps for government bonds or other investments as we're, you know, as there's like a deficit, both at the state level, and then of course, the deficit that we're faced with that is immediate as well as looming. And I was just curious if you could speak to any of those, those investments that the district makes, as well as is there a possibility to be more aggressive? And some of the investments that exist, I know that there's conversations around the interest rates going down. And are we looking at, at things to kind of try to just bring in more on our dollar in any way?
Sure. Thank you for that question. I'm going to ask our financial services director, who is over the treasury on operations, to, to that a little bit more. Mike Doherty, are you still on the call? He was on the call.
You can get back to me via, you know, as a, as a written response. I'm okay with it.
Yep, we will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Board members, I don't see any other hands, so there are no other questions for Ms. Howell. So there being no further business at this time. The time is now 6:37. And the February 1st, 2024 fiscal year, 2025 Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget Work Session will recess and reconvene in the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you, and we will see the public at seven thirty. So I'm asking everybody to please, we're going to take a break, but we will reconvene at seven thirty. Board members, I'll see you at seven thirty, please. Thank you. Bye.